Twenty-two, and we'd like to, again, this is being held via video conference only. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with roll call, please.
Commissioner Wong?
Present.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Present.
Commissioner Quigg?
Present.
Vice Chair Davis, we did hear from, she's coming back, and Chair Joe.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
For all shares.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead with, do we have Commissioner Davis back yet? No, okay. Well, we'll just go on ahead. So with item number one is agenda review. Do we have any items that we need to kind of rearrange or address for the agenda itself? Seeing none, we'll go on to approval of minutes. So this is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2022. And I'll just note, Commissioner, both Commissioner Quigg and I were not present, so. I think.
The Chair, I have one comment on the meetings for the minutes. Under the Larkspur Address, there was also a request that they provided drainage plan. A specific call out for a drainage plan.
Okay.
Do you want to, just want to make one clarification? There was some confusion on the applicant's geotechnical engineer and the city's geotechnical engineer. It's corrected in the minutes, but just for the record, the applicant's engineer that prepared the geotechnical report was Atlas and the city's peer reviewer was Cotton Shires.
Okay, but that is corrected in the report, it's in the minutes. Okay, thank you. Any other changes or comments on the minutes? Yes, now Commissioner Wong?
Recommend that for all the meeting minutes, you know, since we don't have a lot of the details, that we just have the link or reference to the MCTV link on the meeting, so if people want the full meeting notes or minutes, they can go to that link. Just adding a line item to these minutes.
Okay, I think, is that something easily to do, or is that okay to do, get to the staff?
I'm sorry, if you can repeat that, I didn't hear.
Commissioner Wong was asking about maybe adding a link to the recording of the meeting? Into the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Darcy and Roscoe, if you're shaking your head, yes.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea, so. People to do that. But on these minutes, do we have a?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes mentioned.
One second.
Okay, motion second. Do we, Commissioner Quigg, if you're, I see your lips moving, but I don't hear you, so.
I think we have to, is Commissioner Davis on now?
Yes, Commissioner Davis, Vice Chair Davis is back. So Vice Chair Davis, there's a motion on the floor to, can we see your video? So there's a motion to go ahead and approve the meeting minutes with the addition of a request for drainage plan on 920 Larkspur, 990 Larkspur project. And there has been a second, so can we call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
I'll abstain.
And Commissioner Quigg?
Abstain.
Great. Meeting minutes are approved, three zero with Chair Joe and Commissioner Quigg abstaining with the changes, the callouts. Thank you.
Thank you. And then item number three is public communication, so this is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on their agenda, but is under the purview of the planning commission. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak? And again, this is not on the agenda, what, items on the agenda?
There are no hands at this time.
Okay, no hands, thank you. We're going to go on to item number four, which is the public hearing. So four A is the public hearing on 210 Adrian, which is a public hearing to consider a site development plan, design review permit, minor adjustment to the MSASP development standard for building height, exception to the maximum street wall height limit and conditional use permit to allow for a six-story tall approximately 263,042 square foot life sciences building on an approximately 2.07 acre site located within the transit-oriented development zone of the Millbury Station area specific plan. The project involves demolition of the existing structure on the site and construction of one life science building below and above grade structured parking and relightment of streets, so. And then, do I need to read the project? There's also a project environmental determination, so that is in the agenda. Do I need to read all of that, or are we okay to?
That's good.
Okay, great, thank you. So maybe have the staff report, or did, Mr. Conran, did you want to address anything, or? You're just here for, okay, so if we can go ahead and have the staff report, then, thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Joe and members of the planning commission, my name is Roscoe Motta. I am the Planning Manager, Community Development Department. I'll be making the presentation tonight, and to also want to acknowledge staff that is present tonight. Marada Hayagui Grieve, who is the project planner for this project. She's a consultant assisting the city. Michael Conran, Assistant City Attorney, is available for questions. Harry Burrows, I believe, will be in attendance in this meeting. He's a project manager for 22 and assisting the city with the land swap, which I will discuss a little bit more detail later on. Darcy Smith, Community Development Director, and we have Fair and Peers and LSA bear our transportation study and environmental impact, or environmental document, respectively. So tonight for you is the project at 210 Adrian Road and site development plan, designer view permit, minor adjustment to the MSASP development standard for building height, exception to the maximum street wall height and the condition use permit, and this project is 210 Adrian Road. This project is approximately 263,000 square feet. It's for a life sciences building in the transit-oriented development zone in the MSASP. So this project is located, as I mentioned, it's adjacent to the railroad tracks in the Millbury Station area specific land, south of Millbury Avenue, and the project site is denoted in blue. It's adjacent to the Alexandria project, which the planning commission reviewed and approved in December. And it's located east of the railroad tracks and west of the Alexandria development. And the site is approximately two acres. Here's some photos of the existing conditions. We have existing single-story buildings, approximately 85,500 square feet of commercial storage and related improvements. And the area in the, in yellow, at the top of the site plan on the right is BART owned property, and that is Harriet Tubman Way, which is formerly South Station Road. So this project, as I mentioned earlier, is 263,000 square feet. It'll be a life sciences building that'll accommodate future life sciences research lab and associated office spaces. It also includes open space, circulation, parking, and infrastructure improvements. The building will be approximately, the building will be six stories in height, and the height of the building to the upper roof is 89 feet, that's the top of the mechanical equipment, to the top of the parapet will be 102 feet. And the project will also include parking below grade and above grade to accommodate the vehicle, required vehicle parking for the project. So this project also includes two design variants, as noted in the staff report. And these design variants are accommodate, are to accommodate range improvements to Harriet Tubman Way. And the circulation improvements that you will see would improve the circulation in the area. But I do want to note that the area in the orange here is not owned by the city, it is under BART and FTA. They will have to approve land swap, and there are two variations of the project being considered by the planning commission tonight. I do also want to note that the FTA approval for land swap is required as the, as BART, as the owner used federal funds to purchase this land. This is design variant one, which retains the existing configuration of Harriet Tubman Way. This is the existing conditions here, as you can see here, the circulation, vehicular circulation, which is noted in blue lines. As you exit from the gateway project next to the BART station going southbound, there's vehicle circulation could either go parallel to the railroad tracks or along Harriet Tubman Way and then exit either road. There will be no northbound circulation, however, this project, as well as Alexandria project, will take access off Adrian Road. And they will not need to access Harriet Tubman Way to access garage. As you can also see here, pedestrian circulation is shown in orange lines and bike circulation is in green. This is the variant two, which includes this land swap, which essentially swaps land adjacent to Harriet Tubman Road that is currently owned by the property owner. And that land swap will take that piece of land and give that to BART, and then and then it'll shift the property so that there can be additional equal area of land, south, I'm sorry, west of the of the site, adjacent to the railroad tracks, which would allow additional vehicular circulation, which would wrap around to the site and provide fecal circulation to go around the site in a, in a north and then east and then south. So the, this land swap was approved by BART on May 12th. So that, just pretty recently, but it does need formal approval by FTA, but that is just a a formality at this point, as it was already approved by BART. So just want to also note that this configuration does not change the height or the size of the project. It's merely just switching some land and shifting the building property over. So this project is conforms with the Millbury Station area specific plan. It guides future improvements and private development in the planned area and around the Millbury Station area specific plan. It is supportive of transit-oriented development uses. This is the life science on office use, which is consistent with that plan. The project conforms to several development standards in the plan, including setbacks, vehicular parking with a trans, with TDM, bicycle parking, street scape designs. And it does increase the floor area from the maximum 2.5 without any community benefits to 2.92, as it is including community benefits, which I will discuss a little bit later. In addition, there is a minor adjustment to the development standard for building height. The maximum height in TOD zone is 100, and there's only a two-foot increase, which is allowed up to 10% in the plan. Furthermore, there is an exception to the maximum street wall height limit, which is 55 feet, and that requires a 10-foot setback, but instead, the building height along the south of the property is 74 feet six inches, but it will also increase, but it will still include a 15-foot setback at that height. So as I've mentioned, the maximum height limit to the top of the building, so this is a little bit different than what we're used to seeing building height to the top of the structure, because this building does include parapet, and so technically that should be below the 100-foot height limit, but again, there was an adjustment that is similar to an adjustment that we did for Alexandria for the building height. We did not feel that this adjustment in height would be detrimental to any of the land uses, given that it is consistent with the height incompatible with the height of Alexandria, which is about 100 feet as well. And the street wall height limit at 55 feet 10 foot, with a 10-foot setback, the exception request is for street wall height limit of 74 feet six inches and approximately 15-foot step backs, so a little bit more than the plan requires. And this area is really just south of the building, the southern portion of the building. So as I mentioned, the MSASP requires community benefits as if the FAR is greater than 2.5. And the MSASP policy was mended in October 2021 to, to say, for all new development projects in which developer elects and city agrees to utilize the community benefits program, the party shall enter a development agreement or community benefit agreement that specifies the types of community benefits. And community benefits would be, would include, would be funds paid into the city's affordable housing fund. So as stipulated in condition approval number 71 in the attachment, the, this condition would require the parties to enter into a community benefits agreement that satisfies the, the full satisfaction of the community benefit obligation by paying $500,000 to the city of Millbury Affordable Housing Fund or another fund that we deem consistent with the Millbury area, Millbury Station area specific plan, community benefits program. It's circulation and parking, the pedestrian sidewalk improvements are going to be included in both variants. There is going to be a plaza at corner of Harriet Tubman Way, and there's also going to be new street trees along the north and the east side of the property. Pedestrian scale lighting, new street furniture, 459 vehicle parking spaces inside the parking garage, as well as long-term and short-term bike working. The TDM plan that was prepared would meet 20% reduction in vehicle trips. Some of the plan strategies include participating in the commuter benefits program, community marketing program, emergency ride home program. The project will also include bicycle parking showers, lockers, and bicycle repair station. So there's a lot of different options for, for the developer to meet that production. The Millbury Station area specific plan requires 10% of the lot area to be publicly available, and the project is proposing to provide 17.2% in about 15,500 square feet of new open space across the site. In addition, what's included with that, it's 13 street trees that are planted along Harriet Tubman Way, and for the sustainability measures in terms of native trout species and trout tolerant plants. With respect to the California Environmental Quality Act, the proposed project was analyzed at MSASP EIR at the programmatic level, and the favorable document, there was a sequence analysis that was prepared, including a written checklist that was completed for this project. And similar to the project that was reviewed by the commission in December, this project was also considered and evaluated within the MSASP EIR, and her was, we did not find that there is any newer substantially more severe significant environmental impacts than disclosed in the MSASP EIR, included the addendum, and therefore no further environmental reviews required. Furthermore, the VMC analysis was completed, and the project meets the screening criteria, and the impact of the VMC is less than significant. So the staff recommendation for the commission tonight is to adopt a resolution approving a site development plan, design review permit, minor adjustment to the MSASP development standard for building height, exception to the MSASP maximum street wall height limit and conditions permit, making the findings, approving sequence analysis, and adopting an MMRP and a statement overriding considerations to allow life sciences building, sorry, for the typo there, with an integrated parking structure, a 2.37 acre site located at 210 Adrian Road, based on the findings of approval in the resolution and subject to the conditions of approval in existing A. Staff is available for any questions at this time. Also, the applicant team is in the meeting, will be making a presentation, and will be available for questions as well.
Thank you. So to the commissioners, I guess first a reminder that the community benefits is not under the purview of planning commission, so this is something that will be taken up with the city council, so I would kind of, that's something that would, if we were to choose to approve the project to move ahead, the community benefits is not something that we would need to discuss here. With having said that, do the commissioners have questions before we have the applicant? Or do we want to go ahead and have the applicant speak first, or Mr. Conran, did you want to?
Perhaps before we start, commissioners could mention any expert contacts that may have had with interested parties on this project.
So any, any expert communications? No from Commissioner Wong? Okay, none, none from the others, and then none from the either, so. Yep, so that's clear. And then do we have any questions, or should, do you want to wait, hold off until the applicant does their presentation?
I'm fine waiting.
Okay, any other commissioners? Commissioner Wong?
Can we clarify the, if we're approving the variant one or two? And then also, do we have authority to approve the project if a part of the land to be developed is on a BART right-of-way? And it needs to be negotiated with BART to be able to use that land?
Can we have staff to?
Yes, the, the project before, we're, the project under consideration is, considers both variants. So should the planning commission decide to approve the resolution before the commission tonight, it would collude both variants. So the after science meeting, should the planning commission approve it, then the building permits could, could proceed under either, either way.
But the approval wouldn't be valid for the BART property, right? Correctly, is there construction occurring on the property currently owned by BART, or is that simply a roadway?
No, it is.
A roadway, okay. So that's just an access issue.
And then does there need to be an agreement with BART on how that right-of-way would be used, will be publicly accessible? Will it be private?
It would be in agreement with the city and BART.
Okay, publicly accessible then, that's you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other, Commissioner Quigg, and you're muted.
So did I hear you say that if we prove this project, we have no say on variant one or variant two? Did I understand that correctly?
Well, you do have a say on variant one and two. We're, we're giving the developer an option to proceed with either one under the current proposal, which provides two different options.
Okay, what if we do not favor one of them?
But that, that's something that the commission can, can deliberate and can consider as a, as a preference, if that's what the commission decides.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, let's go ahead and have the applicant do their presentation then.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you for the time this evening to the commission and to staff. We appreciate your time, and we really appreciate the opportunity more so to become part of hopefully the Millbury community. Quickly introduce our team, give you an overview about Longfellow, and then dive into the project. I am Peter Fritz, Senior Director of Development for Longfellow. I oversee our development practice. With me is my colleague Alex Capamanis. He is our project executive and project manager for the 210 Adrian project, along with Terra Corlepara, our Associate Director of Development, overseeing development in the Bay Area. With our architect, we have Philip Raw and Joseph Marshall with Flat Architects. We have our Civil Engineer BKF, our MEP Engineer, Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing Engineer Myers Plus. They're on the phone this evening, as well as our landscape architect to answer any questions. And our contractor is Level 10 Construction, and our gento Graham is providing sustainability consulting for the project. Quickly to give you an overview of Longfellow. Longfellow is a life science investor, developer, owner, and manager of real estate focused on the life sciences space. We've been focused on this market for over a decade, and we are the largest privately-held life science real estate owner in the United States. We have a portfolio of approximately 14 and a half million square feet of existing and development product. And we're in six major life science markets of Boston, Durham, North Carolina, San Diego, the Northeast, and New York, the United Kingdom, and most importantly, in the Bay Area. We are a vertically-integrated company, which allows us to provide best-in-class services for our tenants and really engage with the community, which we're particularly excited to bring to, to the Millbury community. Within the Bay Area, we have a massive portfolio of about 2.4 million square feet of existing product from Emeryville down to Palo Alto, and we have a development pipeline of 2.4 million square feet, which includes approximately 265,000 square feet at 210 Adrian. We are particularly excited to be in the Bay Area. It's the, the leading life science region behind, just behind Boston, and is full of innovative companies that is advancing the human condition. We are particularly excited to be in Millbury with the transit-oriented nature of the TOD district. It's quickly becoming a key life science cluster. We are excited to, to bring life science and, and further bring innovation into Millbury. As part of that, it's ultimately about the, the people doing science in the buildings. We provide the real estate, the scientists and the researchers are the ones really advancing the human condition and driving innovation. We have partnerships with leading institutions and private firms that we look forward to, to bring to the city and ultimately to the project 210 Adrian. About the project itself, I'm sure you're all very familiar with the location, which is best, best in the Bay, right next to one of the largest transit stations on the West Coast, close to the downtown shopping core and close to SFO. We see this mid-plaza location is really primed for revitalization, leveraging the economic drivers that life sciences is able to bring. These are some existing shots of the project that has, currently sits at 210 Adrian, single-story public storage facility. As you're aware, you've approved a project to the, to the east and south of us, Alexandria's Life Science Project, which is under construction, and this is quickly becoming a vibrant cluster. We thank you for your vision of developing the Millbury Station area specific plan, and we're very excited to help bring that vision to reality. And with that, I will hand it over to Philip with Flat Architects to highlight the project.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. Our proposed design followed the design principles for MSASP's goals for urban vision. We focused on pedestrian-oriented design. We designed for bicycling and mobility. We activated the ground plane through public spaces and retail slash amenities, and we created open areas that are protected from the prevailing winds. And lastly, we articulated the building massing that breaks up the scale and enhance place making. Next, please. As you know, since our building is in a very urban site, it has presence on all four boundaries. So we designed the building to have four front doors, essentially. Over from the top left, we have Millbury Avenue view going clockwise. We have Adrian Road view. At the bottom, BART Caltrain tracks view, and lastly, Harriet Tubman Way view. Each of the facade responds Each of the facade responds to the unique conditions and activates them through massing. Materials, scale and building performance. Next, please. Along Harriet Tubman Way, we opened up the ground plane by lifting up the building mass in elevation. And we pulled back in plan. This gesture created an pedestrian plaza that extends the building's front door to the outside and blurs the lines between. Public space and indoor space. We also activated the space through amenity program and creating this front door as you come in from the Millbrae station. To this area along Harriet Tubman Way. Since this facing the north side, we also took advantage of providing a lot more glazing on the side to bring more light to the spaces. But also visually making it the front door to the campus. Next, please. Along the railroad tracks, we the street is named Elevate Way. We balanced the challenges of noise, daylight, views and solar control. This is facing due west. We did that through the introduction of more solid zones through the cementous cementitious materials. This material created texture and sound control as well as solar control along this west facade. At the garage screens below and then the screens above, we introduced planted wall panel systems to control both. To create warmth as well as control sound in these areas. As well as providing natural ventilation for parking garage down below. Next, please. Along Millbrae Avenue where the overpass is, we continue the similar language that we've showed on the Bart train side. But we also revealed an outdoor space at the same height as the overpass. This created a visual activation of this experience when you approach the building. But it also created a front door as you come from this corner view. Next, please. As I mentioned in the previous slides, all of those elevations are documented in the four images that you see here. There are. There are four main materials. One is a textured GFRC, which is a cementitious panel material. As well, and then the the precast systems that don't have the striping texture, but more of a greener warmth. Texture that you see on certain stone walls. And then the third material are high performance glazing and metal systems. That provide for daylight, access to views, comfort and energy control and sound control. The fourth item is what we call the planted wall system. And they are along the parking garage areas as well as the mechanical screen areas. And we did that to again to control. The the air balance movement for parking garage, but also create texture and creating warmth to the facade. Next, please. The project is is built designed for about 263,000 square feet of lab office amenity building. It consists about 459 stalls. Most projects like this would have typically three different buildings, one for the office lab, one for parking garage and amenity. But because our site is in a very dense urban area, we. Consolidated interlocked the three different programs into one massing. What that does is you have two levels of parking below and three levels of parking above that. And in this in between level of the parking, we are we layered the building program adjacent to that. And then above the parking garage, we have three and a half levels of more lab office space. Next, please. As you see in this existing site circulation, just to orient everybody to this image. Millbrae stations to the left, Millbrae Avenue overpasses to the left. And then the blue and orange line indicates the circulation of both pedestrian and vehicular circulation coming out of Millbrae Station. To the right, we have Adrian Road and currently there is no turn into the site. So all the vehicles that are coming down Adrian Road. Would have to make a very tight U-turn and go up and out of the site. Next, please. The proposed site circulation is a version of variant two. We have, as Roscoe mentioned, we've proposed two different variants, but for the purpose of this presentation, we are showing variant two. In this variant two proposed site circulation plan. We have the the vehicles coming out of Millbrae Station going down to the to the right and along Adrian Road. That's very significant because in the previous slide, all the circulation went north and along Harriet Tubman Way out to Adrian Road. We completely separated the pedestrian circulation bike path and. And vehicular circulation from one another. In addition, along Adrian Road, we provided vehicular access through parking on the south plan south of this Adrian Road. And then we have a loading dock that's in board on the north as shown in the gray arrow. Next, please. All of this was achieved by the swapping of the Bart side to the north. This allowed us to have two way circulation for vehicles coming out of Millbrae Station going to the right. And then cars coming down Adrian Road going up to the the north end of Harriet Tubman Road, Harriet Tubman Way. Next, please. In our proposed site plan, you can see that the the plaza that we've created on the north. Plan north or along the northwest. Corner, northeast corner of Harriet Tubman Way and. Building entrance, we have a plaza that activates the the street with lobby and public cafe that front it. We've extended the bike path as shown in green with access accessing on that side of the street. With planting and street trees with seating on the on the plaza side. As we next please. As we go closer into this plan. We are showing this inside outdoor connection that we proposed on the design. This that we provide seating elements for comfort as well as trees for visual elements. And again, the activation of the plaza through this indoor outdoor transparency. There is bike parking as well as a drop off that we coordinated with the adjacent neighbors. Where the crosswalk is and all the the drop off will be separated from the driveway. Access road so that it's not interfering with the circulation of the space. Next, please. Our proposed design is in line with what the Jason area project is doing. The building height and character are similar. We believe that this proposed design is going to be the innovative center and help expand life sciences hub to Millbrae. Flat architects have done several of these types of buildings throughout the country. And we can say that this is one of the few projects that is very urban and takes on the advantage of being in an urban site. And it will really become the gateway and to the life sciences camp, life sciences world at this site. Next.
Thank you, Philip. We're very excited about the project and the design. We hope you you enjoy it as well. Some other features about the project are the sustainability. Longfellow is very committed to sustainability resilience measures for the benefit of the community and to the environment as a whole. So we have committed for the building to be all electric. With the city's current reach code, there is an exception for life science buildings that we are not pursuing and we are committed to providing an all electric. Life science building, which will be one of the very first in the Bay Area and in the country. We also will be achieving a lead gold certification to reduce the carbon footprint and embodied carbon. As well as also achieving fitwell certification for the betterment of the occupants with inside the building. And a quick overview on the project schedule. We acquired the site in the fall of last year and been working towards. Tonight for quite some time, working with staff and our great consultant team. We hope to obtain your approval this evening. We are advancing design and getting permit documents ready in anticipation of demolition of the existing public storage facility. In August with a groundbreaking of the project in October, which will have approximately tiers of construction. With completion towards the very end of 2020 24, where we hope to welcome new tenants in the building. And with that, turn over for any questions.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation. I think that was one of the most thorough presentations into the thought of design. That I've seen especially Mr. Ross. So thank you and everybody for that. So questions from the commissioners before we go into public comment. Commissioner Delago, I saw you unmute yourself. So did you? Did you want to go ahead and start us off?
My camera, not my mic, but I can start with a couple of questions. I'm going to be finished by the time that a couple others will pop up. I did notice obviously in the report that it said there was a 15,000 square foot cafe. I'm assuming it's a typo. It was smaller. Those in the. Report I got sent out on the link. It was on page three of 14. How big is the cafes? 1500 I assume.
Yeah, it's around 1500 to 2000 square feet, Commissioner. The lobby, the lobby area as a whole, which will also include general lobby space and some kind of. Touch and go conferencing space is approximately 15,000 square feet.
It was a subset, just wasn't linguistically correct in how it was presented. I did notice also on the city's slide presentation, slide nine, it did show some bike routes on Adrian. Towards where right now there's a dead end. Obviously, that seems illogical. Is that really part of the plan? Slide nine, city's presentation.
Maybe call that up. So you're saying?
The. I could pull up slide nine.
Right there, the right hand side and Adrian Road. There's not bike lanes over there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's a error on that side.
That's yes, that that was a.
All right. Well, okay. So I think the biggest question I have is is the impact and I I think we need a discussion here on the impact of having this circulation go around the building. Coming from Adrian Road. I could view this as just a positive, potentially a big negative, which is this puts you within 500 feet of the entrance to the Bart station. This is going to pull a lot of people to drop off. People that are going to come down Adrian Road and go around the building because you get closer there than you can to drop off at the far end of the. Urban Republic development. That creates a circulation where that's going to be a lot of pressure on the intersection of Adrian and of Rollins. Because right now we have for the two facilities going in here, if you add up the number of parking spots here and the number of the next nearly 1500 cars. Are coming down Adrian just for these two facilities every day. Now you're adding on to that also people that are going to want to drop off. People as close to the Bart station as possible. And your your circulation around the building definitely promotes that. Of course, that could take some pressure off the other side. But it can also create some conflict that backs up the old Camino, Rollins Road, Adrian route in. I don't know how I feel about that. I'd like at least we see some studies on the impact that's going to have on traffic. I think that's a pretty big deal, whereas as a dead end, nobody's motivated because you have to walk 1200 feet around the building on Harriet Tubman if you drop them off. On the dead end. So 500 versus 1200 is a very big distance for pedestrian compared to be on the Urban Republic side, which is about 500 feet away. I think it's worth the discussion here.
So Commissioner Delago, what is your question?
I want to I want to know. Is there is there a account for the increased drawn drop off for the the transportation impact on local traffic? Do we have numbers on that?
Can we have? I think we have our transportation person as well, but.
I like, yeah.
That might be a good. I believe that was in the introduction was mentioned.
Yes. Mike Hawkins is is. Is here probably answers some of those questions regarding.
Circulation and traffic. Yep.
Sure, I can give it a stab. In looking at the the circulation, we really focused mostly on how there would be potential impacts to the environment for this particular project. I think that the variant two that they discussed in their presentation allows for more flexibility in terms of vehicle drop off, vehicle circulation. In looking at pedestrian activity, bicycle activity, it's they're both probably pretty similar variant one and variant two. What we didn't really consider in in too much detail was the potential effect of having. More drop offs for Bart along Harriet Tubman, which is what I'm understanding the kind of question to be, right? So if if there's two way traffic on this new service road, just planned south of the site. Would cars turn in velocity from Rollins to Adrian? Loop around this project site and then what I think I'm understanding is would they drop off at this project site? In the provided drop off area along Harriet Tubman.
I think they'll be dropping them off on actual your new road before they even get to Harriet Tubman. I think that curb is going to look a very attractive place to drop a pedestrian off quickly.
Yeah. So I mean, there's. There's some solutions that you can kind of think about, you can work with. At least some of the Uber and Lyft, other TNC providers and. Geo fence this area as like a no drop off zone and that may help, but as you and I both know, that doesn't always solve all of the problems. And that also doesn't affect the people that aren't necessarily using a lift and it's more of a kiss and ride drop off your spouse or kid or whatever. There's there's not really a strong solution for that other than. Just kind of geometric deterrence. And that would be keeping a relatively narrow lane, marking the curb red, potentially posting signs that say no drop off, that kind of thing. There's not a ton you can do to absolutely force people to not drop off there aside from constant monitoring and ticketing if necessary.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Hi, Harry Burrows, which is the city's consultant, two D project manager is in the meeting as well and provide some insight. To answer some of the questions as well.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
Good evening, Chair Joe and. Atlantic Commissioners. So so yeah, actually, if we could back up a second and maybe talk about. The variance in general, the the overall circulation and then I'll I'll come back to this issue that that Mike just mentioned and some of the things we considered around that. Roscoe, would you mind putting up that one of the circulation drawings again? Just because I'd like to shed a little bit of light on the the variants. Okay. So variant two, let me just stay proud of that variant two is the preferred variant. I think that's preferred by city staff. Preferred by the developers, preferred by Bart and it's preferred by. Central County Fire. So one of the major reasons it's the preferred route is this alignment coming out of the Bart station going straight. South to Adrian is fully consistent with the MSASP circulation element. That's that's what the the original road was envisioned for the connection out of the station down to Adrian. But one of the issues is and we. Commissioner Delago, you asked some very good questions. You know, we we struggled and analyzed this early on in terms of circulation around the building. Counter clockwise, clockwise, how do we serve the building from a fire standpoint? And that's what really drove this clockwise. Road element around the building. We originally looked at. You know, with with variant one, variant one is really only a backstop in case we don't get FDA approval. Because if we don't get FDA approval, we want the project to still go forward. Everyone wants the project to still go forward. And variant one allows this project to be developed. It's not ideal from a circulation standpoint. But now sitting here today, which is a different outlook than we had. You know, three months ago, four months ago, when or six months ago, when they started this entitlement process. You know, we have a much better likelihood and idea that FDA approval will be. Obtained because like I said, or like Roscoe said early on, you know, Bart has approved this by their board. FDA approval at this point is we've received verbal approval. It's a written approval is just a formality at this point. FDA approval at this point is uh we've received verbal approval. It's a written approval is just a formality at this point. So the likelihood of variant one being what is built and constructed, I would say is ninety nine percent or greater. However, we can't predict the federal government. Um and if for some reason, i- it fell apart. Um you know, variant one still needs to be consideration because it does allow the project to to go forward. In terms of the specific question related to passenger drop off um around the building. Mean we, like like Mike mentioned, we talked about making it um um for local traffic only. At first, first, we said let's prohibit traffic, but the problem is. Cars come down to the bottom of the the Adrian Road there, the BART um tracks, they they have to have a place to turn around. And so. Um we don't have room for a, you know, large bulb down there and we certainly don't want to be looking at a hammerhead down there. As well as the ability to circulate fire trucks around the building. So this yellow, these yellow um arrows represent that um circulation. And I think to address your question, we we did mention that maybe it's something that we have to provide. Um prohibition and signage prohibition in terms of um red curbs and some 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 sort of enforcement. To stop this from becoming, you know, a primary drop off point for BART. I think the other thing, uh just to clarify, the the drop off for BART on the other side, on the Republic Urban side, you know, the the station side of 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 the um. Of Milbury Avenue, isn't the end of Rollins Road road at that bulb, actually passenger drop off, it circulated through the garage and it occurs up next to the elevators inside of the garage. So it's a little, it is a little bit closer, but it is somewhat say more certuitous and I could see that this might be an attractive, you know, option for folks.
Is it possible to remove the sidewalk that is located between this new road and the building so there's no pedestrians walking or space pedestrians walk between the building and traffic?
I I would defer to the um architects on on that, but I believe we also, you know, explored that early on. And we need to have exit points from the building for, you know, emergencies and and other things. And so we have to have a place for. Um people to exit out of the building in a safe manner. So I I believe that that's why we have to have that sidewalk on that side of the building.
Now, there's a discrepancy between this and the figures shown in the site variant two plan. This does not show from Harriet Tub Tubman Road coming from underneath Milbury Avenue. A left hand turn onto Harriet Tubman, whereas in all the other circulation plans, it shows both directions.
Yeah, so again, this is schematic. Um the the idea is that we want to encourage. Most, if not all of the traffic coming out of the BART garage and coming out of TOD two to follow these blue that um arrows out to Adrian. We only want um in an ideal world, emergency vehicles, um you know, police, fire and you know, um other emergency vehicles to make that left turn there. So the idea is that we're going to prohibit um the majority of traffic from making that left turn there. Um so it would be more consistent, probably not going to be striped exactly like this, but it would be more consistent with this where. You know, most traffic will be directed straight out to Adrian.
So can we put an emergency vehicles only for left hand turn?
Correct, correct. That's that. That's exactly what we talked about doing.
Yeah, I don't want to see obviously more traffic now fighting for that left versus a right at that stop sign.
Right.
I'd like to see them flow out to Adrian Road and leave. Right, straight. So I do see the benefit there. Um but there has to be some method to restrict people from dropping off between Adrian Road and Harriet Tubman crosswalk you have over there. Or else this is just going to end up being a a faster way. I'd probably drop people off over here versus trying to wait in line to get through the BART station. This seems more attractive. And I don't think that Adrian Road and Rollins Road intersection can handle it. Even right now, with the in and out traffic sticking out of there, it's very difficult to get through that intersection.
Did you have further questions, Commissioner?
Um. Well, I I do challenge to see an improvement to restricting pedestrians is is what I'm asking for.
Got it. Yep, understood. So did you?
Let's get to maybe some of the biotech part. I'm a biologist, I'm an oncology scientist who works in industry. Um tell me about the facilities as far as what is available. We have animal facilities on site. Yes.
So Commissioner, this, we're designing and building this as a speculative development. We do not yet have tenants um secured. So we provide a robust infrastructure to facilitate um what tenants may need.
Right, but you do have to build infrastructure specifically for species, variums.
If if that were to occur, that'd be part of the tenant improvements, again identified once, once tenants are identified. So the the corn shell has a good floor to floor heights, a robust structural frame, robust vibration criteria to be able to support that ten improvement if that is a need.
Okay, um what limitations do you have with researching the site? Radio, radio isotopes, pathogens, VSL two level only, I see.
Up to VSL two.
Yeah, um obviously, you know, I don't see a lot of standards in here as far as, you know, water sampling. I don't see like last time we developed the. Program for the the neighbor building, the building, there's a lot more detail on the biotech side of things. Uh we didn't really go into great detail about that as far as what the infrastructure within the building, how it's designed. Uh where vibariums, where lab space physically within the building would be. You're saying it's more of an open shell. You got to figure that out later.
Phil, maybe you can pull up a typical floor plan showing that we've certainly, we've certainly thought of that and planned for that. So we will be providing what's. Called a warm shell. So the mechanical central plant will be provided as part of this initial project. That would provide the the supply air and the exhaust for laboratories up to fifty percent or sixty percent of the building. As well as plumbing lines, gut lines to support uh wet laboratories. That would be installed installed as part of the ship, as part of the shell, freight elevators, robust service and loading dock. Uh emergency generator as well as a service yard should a tenant require bulk tank storage. So uh again, the infrastructure um is flexible to accommodate the specific requirements, but again, Phil, maybe you can pull up a. A floor plan to show the general areas that we expect to be laboratory versus office. But again, it's being designed so that if any one floor were to be all all laboratory, it could be built out that way through the ten improvements.
Um Alex, you have the slides, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I can pull it up right now. One moment. Here's just a a typical floor plate.
Can you go to one of the color diagrams, maybe on the axiometric?
I don't think we can zoom in a little bit so they can see it. Go to levels four and five, yeah. So the typical level, the yellow indicates the lab space um and with some lab support, but also. Uh the big uh portion of that gray is uh dedicated to uh mechanical systems and support. And then the orange indicates lab support directly for the labs itself. On the other side, we're dedicating that area for um office related functions.
Um, yeah, obviously, yeah, it's a very empty shell type approach. You mentioned um bulk storage for um fluids. You talk about liquid nitrogen storage. Where'd that be located?
That would be located on the ground level off the the loading dock area, the service area.
Visible from the street. Obviously, you got to fill them.
Yeah, yeah, it it it's easily accessible from the loading dock, but not very visible from the street because we'll be screened off with this. Um service yard wall screen. It's part of the architecture. If you didn't see it in the renderings, that means we did a great job.
Good. Um I guess uh one thing I I question is, is your third floor um patio area that's located on the. The the northwest side. Isn't that the prevailing wind side of the building?
That's correct. Uh we are working with our wind consultants and we're um mitigating that through clear glass uh uh wind protection. But the the goal here is to activate that area and um you know, wind, when there are windy days, we're not, it's not going to. Um stop the activity and energy that's happening in this uh lab office space.
And and. It's rather close to the BART tracks themselves in the rendering, is how it looks. Um you know, that side of the building, is it overhang the road underneath? The service road or and or two directional road?
It, it's a design feature that uh show that it's part of that um expression. Um but if we're within the the code um requirements for the the overhang that you're talking about.
There's no risk of interaction with BART trains as far.
No, 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 it's.
Not like overhang and can't throw something.
No, 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 no.
I know they don't run trains down there. That's the exchange where they actually change tracks that they're on.
Yeah.
Pedestrians down there.
I mean, so you have the the Railroad Museum across uh and this is one of the design features that we want to celebrate in this uh city.
And I'll be remiss if I don't bring it up. Um it was a problem for the other development across the street for me, which was the single in, single out. Your parking is not as dramatic as theirs. They had over nine hundred cars, nearly a thousand cars going into their ten story uh park complex. You have a a lot less. I think you're four hundred and fifty nine cars. Um I still prefer to see more than a single in and out because I know how that goes as far as traffic backing up while somebody's trying to get into. Because somebody's trying to pull out of a parking spot near the entrance. Um I feel like there's a major risk here um for traffic impact and safety. On the surrounding community with single in and outs. Is there not a possibility of another exit on the Harriet Tubman side of the building?
Peter, do you want me to answer that or?
Yeah, please. I mean, you can, you can speak to the architecture and again, maybe like axiometric will help the. The way the parking structure fits with the building casting and topping them, wrapping around it. Um if there's, it's not feasible to cut through. Because there's the core areas required to support the building as well as the 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 lab and lobby space to the to the plan east along Harriet Tubman.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, this is a very tight site. We're essentially putting three different building programs into one building, so it has a. Interlocking connection. So uh parking is really limited to uh plan south and exiting off of uh Adrian Road. Um we do have uh uh we're working with our parking consultants to have during rush hours to have two out and one in. Um and to control that traffic flow, so it's not backed up all the time. In terms of exiting for people in the building, we have two dedicated exits that uh go out to elevate way. Um and we have, those are dedicated just to the parking and then we have a shared uh exit in the core area for both building and parking.
And so the two in and out, the flexible in and out addition is something you're still considering or it's something that's in the design?
Uh we designed it for that flexibility.
Um I'll pass other commissioners across the questions at this point.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Nego. Always great questions. Uh any other commissioners like to have any questions of the staff or applicant? I'm not seeing anybody at this time. Uh Commissioner Wong, are you, you're kind of coming back in? Go ahead.
Sure. Um. I concur with that Commissioner Nego about some issues about circulation, traffic. Actually, a different little perspective though, I was. Convisioning that this could be a second egress from the BART station and that it should be expected to be. Um because they're right now, as it is with the BART station, there's only one main entrance on Rollins Road and then this would provide another egress. Another issue is that um development slated for Rollins Road and Burlingame has big plans to put the high density residential developments all along Rollins Road. So this is. In the future could be a big thoroughfare for people walking, biking to the BART station from Rollins Road. So. Uh the design elements uh that were put into this to look at um biking and pedestrian walkways. Uh I think it's very good. It could use some more development. But in addition to this being, I guess, as far as questions, um is this is part of TOD developments or vision for Milbury with. Uh TOD developments is mixed use, urban village, uh not only um. Single use commercial or single use residential, but mixed use like residential, commercial, retail. So question for the developer is, what do you envision? A for the retail or the little cafe on the bottom, will that have public access? Will this uh frontage? Uh area be a little courtyard available for the public? And then also, I know that for the open space requirement, you're claiming that the top level will have open space. Will that be available public? Or I didn't see any plans on how that would be developed. There's there's any greenery up there to reduce the carbon footprint or development or landscaping on top. Uh how would we envision that being used as open space?
Good questions, Commissioner. Um so the first part is the the on the northeast corner of the bend. At Harriet Tubman, the the plaza that is absolutely designed to be um open to the public as well as the lobby really working on the. Indoor outdoor kind of, you know, feeling as you're you're pulling away that threshold. Um the lobby and the cafe will be open to the public and we see that really as a vibrant plaza there. So if you're, if you're walking or biking. To or from the 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 Barton Caltrain Station, that's where you stop and you get your coffee before and after, you take a break. And you go, you go get um some goods from hopefully as a a local vendor is the operator for the cafe where. We haven't secured one yet, but that is the vision. Um and then as for the the patio spaces, there is a terrace on the third floor that was previously mentioned. Um and the the biophilia and the greenery that you've seen, working hard to incorporate a lot of that in the screening for the parking structures, as well as the screening on the top level. Where the mechanical equipment is to introduce um more planting.
So for the plans on the bottom floor next to the cafe, there's various markings that it's uh amenity or MEP. Is it possible that those in the future could be converted to. Retail, commercial space or other restaurants, cafes? There.
Yes, we have the plans for the the one cafe. Um the other spaces, those are necessary to support the operations for the building as as a life science building. Mechanical rooms, electrical rooms, et cetera.
Is there any thought about um as going along and uh furthering Commissioner Del Negro's thought is that. There's the loading unloading area that is uh near the southeast corner of the building, which is almost directly across from the parking entrance. For the other facility and that normally mechanical, you know, loading, et cetera. We'd like to see those. Um in the back of the building, you know, obscured, but as it is, seems like everyone commuting in will have to go past that loading unloading area, see all that. Uh industrial type activities and then pull in the parking lot further down. Uh and then that uh having large semis or heavy trucks unloading, you know, it could tie up a lot of traffic, not only for your building. But also for the parking lot across the street there too. Uh so I think it needs some thought.
Yeah, this is, this is a challenging site, you know, it is so urban. It's, you know, like we're in in a downtown San Francisco urban environment. Um you know, when we first acquired the project, the the service yard was actually um on the opposite side of the building on the northwest side. Immediately adjacent to the the Cal, the BART station um exit. Um and there are some obvious challenges with that um for all the reasons that were brought up earlier. And so there really is no back door in this building. That's why it's been designed the way it has because it's really. Um depending where you're coming by car or pedestrian or bike or BART. You know, there's you're you're kind of always only seeing the front door, but it had to go somewhere. And so we spent a lot of time working with uh Flad and our. Our architect or civil engineer BKF and the traffic consultant, Ferran Pierce, to find that right location. Um with these life science buildings, we design for a large truck like a, you know, a full size semi tractor. Um although that's typically only used for when tenants are moving in and moving out, furniture, um most of the operations are. Box trucks and and smaller trucks you could doers. And so the the service yards designed so that they can pull in. Directly without having to um to back in and and block traffic um with a. Then be able to fully pull in and not block the street. So um. A lot of thought and effort was put into optimizing the the service and loading as possible.
I could see that that uh loading unloading area may also be used for waste receiving and recyclable, et cetera, off hauling garbage. So all that is nice to put in the back.
And that's designed to be within.
I'm sorry, uh I think Mr. Fitz, Commissioner, I think uh Mr. Fitz was finishing a sentence, so just love to. You were saying something.
I was just responding to the the commissioner's question about garbage and that the trash compactors and garbage are designed to be within the loading dock and the service yard to fully enclose. So. The the garbage trucks would pull in and not block the street.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um can you talk a little bit about the sound wall and what the intent of the? Can you talk a little bit about the sound wall and what the intent of the design for the sound? Because there are on the west side of building, the Caltrain BART tracks, very loud loud noise. What is the sound meant to or will sound wall meant to do? Because the fear would be for tenants on the other side of the BART track if it was large, you know, kind of a resonant sound wall, it could bounce the sound and project it up into the hills there from the from the Caltrain and BART when it goes by.
Okay, I take that one?
Yeah, part of the wall design, we there are two things. One, we have acoustical glass that provides control onto the the tenants inside, but we picked cementitious material so that it absorbs sound, not just reflect. So it's like a balancing act that we've carefully placed along the the BART track side.
I will add that we did an acoustic study as well to understand what acoustics need to be accounted for. The, you know, as I point out, the those tracks are not heavily used and really the only event that, you know, creates a significant noise is the trains, the train horns, excuse me. So it's the horns in particular that the acoustic is being treated for. And Philip, you know, playing architect and acoustic engineer, but enough of these beings, I think. Though you can also talk about the way the facade is designed is not a solid surface as far as inundation since designed to break up the the waves and dissipate that.
Right.
It's just fully bouncing off.
Yeah.
You know.
To expand, to expand on that, the facade is not a straight wall. We have all these ins and outs that break up the sound.
And the last question I have is, what was the design intent in thinking about placing the courtyard on the top floor on the south southern end of the building rather than the northern end of the building? And question I would have is, if I were a tenant in the TOD developments across El Camino and those high-rise high-density residential developments and I saw this building life sciences building for what I see going on?
I I'd lost some of the audio, so I didn't quite hear the end of the questions. I apologize for that.
Right. What was the intent for placing the upper story open space on the southern end of the building versus the northern end? And how will that impact the tenants in the TOD two in the BART station, high-density residential developments? Is it possible that there could be something on that side or consideration given toward open space on on the northern end of the building?
The really it's taking advantage of the views. And I don't know, Alex, do we have a good rendering showing that patio space what the views are? It's really looking back up at the hills. It's it's really quite the quite the view. So that was that as well as the parking structures below to allow for that terrace to happen. So that's the objective there. We're still designing the program on the inside of space, but it's intended that that will be amenity space for the tenants. So likely conferencing space. So it will be a nice patio for for tenants to enjoy seating and lounge space outside of a conference facility.
Does that address you? Was that the question you were asking, Commissioner Wong?
I guess the question is, is I guess bluntly, you know, we're looking at transition in the neighborhood that is directly across the street from this on the other side of the bridge that's residential. And if it's all possible to put that open space in that green belt on the northern end so that when residents look out their windows, they can see something nice in green and open space rather than a big giant glass wall.
So you're addressing the north side?
Yes.
Across Millbrae Avenue.
Right.
Over there, oh.
Through the chair.
Oh, I think you need, yes, go ahead. I think it's.
Yes, so there is a street wall height limit and that's one of the except, that's the exception that's being requested. By doing that, it would flip the building. So the green walls on the other side and the glasses on the south side, but that would further exacerbate the the street wall height. So the the intent is really to have a lower height of the south side of the the building. And that street wall height is required for distances greater than six hundred feet from the station. And then the street wall height within that distance is came up to a hundred.
So Roscoe, why is there a lower height on the south end, but not a lower height required on the north end?
That's part of the MASC development standards.
Shouldn't it be consistent and be required on both ends?
That's that's beyond the scope of this discussion.
I have to look at that code. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Did I'm not sure. Did did the applicant's answer about, I think Commissioner Wong had asked about the third floor terrace and that being is that public space? Because that's considered as part of the open space calculation. I think that's I I don't know if that was answered.
The third floor terrace does wrap around. It's mostly on the the west side and it does wrap around to the north. So the residents at the TOD residential area will see, we'll see that on that facade as well as the glass.
But is that open to the public is the question.
You know, I I will refer to Roscoe or Darcy if that's included in the open space calculation. We had we had several conversations on if that was included or not.
Is it? Because in the staff report, it mentions it. That's why I'm kind of following. That was part of my one of my questions. Do we have? We can come back to that, but I page three. We can come back to that, but that'll be a question that I have. So Commissioner Quigg, if you can just go to. It was page eleven of the staff report. Commissioner Quigg, go ahead. And you're muted.
Thank you. I was muted. A lot of good questions. I have several that were raised. I have large concerns on the circulation. Absolutely. More on variant one. Much less on variant two, but I have big concerns about that. I don't know how we could get that old station road as two lanes going in and out of BART. And I would tend to think that's probably beyond our control, but it would certainly make a lot of sense to do so. I'm happy to see that at least on the variant two. The circulation is a little bit better. Unfortunately, that's the one spot there. But anyway, it's pretty much a dress. I definitely am against variant one. Could probably live with a variant two, however, I would like to see it better than it is right now. I too feel that.
Commissioner Quigg, sorry. Do you have a question? Do you have questions for the applicant? Because we're not going into discussion quite yet. So.
Yeah, their question is basically what they could do to help out.
Is there something that you can do to help out in terms of increasing circulation or?
And even even going up into the even going up continuing up the road. You know, which goes into the on the other side of Millbrae Avenue from where it starts. Is there something that can be done to that?
Going past eight, continuing past Adrian, is that?
No, the other side.
Going past, okay, well, Mr. Burrows, maybe you can address that. Is that why?
Because out of the BART station is only one way. Is that correct?
That is that that is correct. So there's there's no real place for traffic to go from the south if they were headed up into, you know, toward the station. Coming out of the garage is one way heading south as well as coming out of the garage entry or the garage exit of the TOD two building, the residential building on TOD two. That is that is an exit only as well. So all the traffic that's coming heading south of Millbrae Avenue is one way south. So that's there. There's no place for a northbound road to go.
Absolutely. No way. Okay, thank you. And okay, the other part had to do with the restaurant. And the other one was the other questions I had were really questions that have already been addressed. And I think that's it. The other one was really had to do with the restaurant for the seven hundred and fifty-one people with would be occupying the space and that's pretty much been addressed. I think that's it. It was basically a lot of the same questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair.
Sure.
To answer the question regarding the open space, open space calculations on the ground floor and that's shown on for variant one, A two point zero zero two A of the plan sheet.
Okay, thank you. So it's not because it sounded like it was just across. It was in the sheets. In the staff report, it sounded like it's including that terrace at level three. So thank you for clarifying. Okay, I think just Commissioner Davis, did you have any questions? Okay, and oh, I did have one question in terms of, I know we've been bringing up a lot in terms of the very one and very two and very two being the more preferred. Was there any consideration into if for some reason the FTA approval doesn't go through? Could the building be adjusted rather to be able to still accommodate possibly a two-way road? Was there was there any consideration given to that? Or is that not a possibility?
We we did look at that with with architect and symbol and it didn't physically work with the constraints.
Because because the building as the lot itself is already.
Yeah, just yeah, given the the size of and the and the location of the property lines.
And I would just add to that, Peter, we we have to accommodate certain setbacks on Harriet Tubman Way on the east side of our property. And so if we try to move the building further east, we would conflict with those required setbacks.
Okay, got it.
A whole more questions if you don't mind.
Sure, Commissioner Del Negro.
Um, so one of which is has the, well, so I'll make a comment and a question. One is I do like the articulation of the building. I like that there's an overhang that comes from UC San Diego, but we have the diesel library and it's kind of parks back to some of that cool structure. I like that. There's the wall underneath though that faces Millbrae Avenue. The one thing you see as you come out from the train station, it looks like it's a lot of cement. Is there anything to be done to kind of soften the feel of that face at the street level? The stairwell kind of goes up to your third floor terrace and just a big wall of cement going up. It's the one place in the building where you see a big wall of cement.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunities there, Phil. Maybe you want to speak to that?
Well, there there are a couple of ideas. It's that's where we have our bike storage when you come in. And that's the so we were thinking about some type of super graphics that show that this is bike storage and activated visually that way. We talked about potentially working with artists to activate that area. So it's not looking at a cementitious material itself. And the other idea that we were exploring are the idea of the green wall on that facade.
It is also the entrance to Millbrae's new biotech center. So anything you could do to pull in Millbrae biotech? Possibly seeing something with Harriet Tubman. I mean, there's some alternative things there I couldn't imagine that would benefit Millbrae and our new biotech centers that are in this area. I think you're 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 building to be the first one everybody sees. It's going to be very nice to see it.
Absolutely. That's a great recommendation, Commissioner. And we we didn't include any precedent images from other properties in our portfolio. But if you do take a spin on our website, you'll see that activating the space and artwork is is something that we take a lot of pride in all of our all of our properties. So we will certainly look to do something similar and even elevate that further here.
Okay, your signage, I see there's signages both on the BART side, on the south BART side, and there's signages on the south Adrian. Or sorry, the east Adrian side on the south end. There's no signage facing towards Millbrae Avenue. Is that correct? At street height or up at Millbrae Avenue height? I'm worried about light going towards the TOD development, high-density housing. There's not a sign for the building blaring light across the street. We asked that question of the developer next to you as well.
I can I can jump in here on this one, Peter. So the primary elevation where we were planning on signage. And I don't believe we're asking for any signage, any approvals of signage at this time, but the thinking was to have signage facing the one O one direction. So as vehicles are coming up Millbrae Avenue, they would be able to see that. And yes, you're correct. We wouldn't. We're not intending at least currently to put signage facing Millbrae Avenue and the station as well as the Gateway Project on the other side.
I was looking at your slide sixty-six in the slide deck there. There's obviously some shows us some signage on the green wall on the top floor on the BART side and on the glass, but I it looks like that is kind of facing towards the other biotech facility, not towards the housing. Is that correct?
That's correct. That that would be the current intent, yes.
All right, great. The one other question that kind of maybe jumps up to me is because I've seen it before with some glass buildings like this is you have traffic right next to the glass building as far as the same height. The incidence of light coming through the building at sunrise will put light through that side of the building coming at people coming up the hill from El Camino Real on Millbrae Avenue. Is the light going to be coming through the building? Could there be any risk of glare coming through that corner? With the northeast corner of the building.
Philip, maybe, did you want to?
Sure.
Question.
Public safety here. I mean, just got drivers coming up in the morning.
Yeah, so we will be, as as we were working with the design and developing design, we will be finding ways to resolve that because it's it's a complicated coordination between the builder and the design. But we will be factoring that in in the final design submission for the permit.
That was it for the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any others? Actually, I I was wondering about in terms of signage and artwork. I know for some of our developments, we've had you know, a signage program and and artwork, but I think for this one, there's not. Is that of the staff? So what how what is the procedure for that? Because I know there's no tenant yet, so it might differ depending on tenant. But we also do want to be able to see because this is a very active area. Hopefully, of Millbrae. So we want to be able to see that it will have a good sign program as well as artwork. So and for that public space, the the lobby, the wraparound area. So can you speak to that, please, and Mr. Mataki?
Sure. Yes, the sign, master sign for you will come back to the commission subsequent to this meeting.
Okay, and that would be after a tenant or or is acquired or is that?
It's not required as long as we have enough information to specify when any future signage will contain in terms of materials, size and lighting. That's all we need, but it will come back to the commission in a separate meeting.
Okay, so whatever is in the rendering is more just a rendering. It's not really, that's not part of the approval process.
Right, just for conceptual.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to be clear on that because I I think it if if it goes well, it'll be a really nice activated space, but we want to make sure that it looks attractive and all of that. So it's good to know that we have that will be coming back at a certain point if this moves forward. So Commissioner Del Negro.
Yes, I one last question. I want to make sure my numbers are right. For the far ratio exceeding two point five, you really are adding thirty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-five square feet. And that allows for a three hundred and fifty square foot per per employee, an extra eight hundred, a hundred and eight employees for the building. Is that correct? My number's right?
I would have to double check though, but that does sound correct.
So we're we're gaining a hundred and eight employees is what I understand by exceeding the two point five far ratio and going up to two point nine or two point nine, right?
Perhaps the applicant can speak to the number of employees.
Yeah, you're right, Commissioner. It's usually around three hundred and fifty. Yeah, the, uh, you're right, Commissioner. It's usually around three hundred and fifty to four hundred square feet per person. For a typical life science use.
That was it, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, um, we have, I do know that we, I do see that we have members of the public here, so. I'd like to go ahead and open up to any public, members of the public wishing to speak on this. So if you do, please raise your hand um on Zoom. And uh, and let us know that you would like to speak. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? The staff, see anybody? I don't. No. Okay. Okay, a couple of more seconds. Alright, so um it seems like we don't have any, so um can we go ahead and vote to close the public comment? Section.
Make.
Commissioner Del Negro motions, second.
Second.
Thank you. Can we have a vote to close public comment?
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Donagre?
Yes.
Commissioner Quig?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
Yes.
Thank you, public comments, please.
Thank you. So um can we go ahead and go into commission uh discussion or? And during the motions? As we go, so who'd like to start us off? Trying to keep track of everybody. This is the Commissioner, Commissioner Wong, go ahead.
Sure, I'll start. There's a lot I like about this building. I really like the screen activation. Little bit of the mixed use, a lot of thought put into the traffic and the circulation. What's concerning to me a little bit is, is about the aggressive schedule with the construction. I think that uh we need to set expectations for these, especially these large projects, that if we have these meetings. Then we should expect to have some community and uh commission feedback that we would like to have them incorporate. For this one, I see that um. Uh, there's issues about developing signage. Clarifying variant two, I'm in favor of variant two. I'm not in favor of approving of a plant that has two different variations and we don't know what's going in. Uh, I think along with the signage, there could be more wayfaring uh. Some uh, the circulation path coming from Rollins Road, across Adrian Road, across from Alexandria to. This uh complex and then over to the BART station. I think that there is a path there and the uh crosswalks are marked out. I think it'd be excellent to have like even pavers or a guided path in front of the building that directs people. To the BART station and having pavers or a little bit of a sidewalk design to accentuate that. I think that would be outstanding in addition to having a lighting on the side of the building of Harriet Tubman Way on the northern end. So that, uh, you know, a little bit more details, a little bit more accents, a little bit more walkable paths and make it more enjoyable for people going. To and from the bar station. And as we mentioned, I'm envisioning that in the future, this is going to be a heavily trafficked area. I would like to see more retail uh or mixed use or designation for that cafe. Uh, the amenity area. Uh, again, this is TOD or vision is mixed use. And if we have more. Space, retail, commercial space on the bottom floor, you know, with this heavy traffic, it could be in the future used for other. Commerce, which would be outstanding. Uh, the biggest issue I have with this project though is, even though it looks very. Straightforward, simple, commercial building, it's not because. The location of this in the TOD project directly across from El Camino make it not only. A transition. Uh, building from the residences in the Gateway Project. But it also forms an arch on each side of El Camino i- into our city, so that when people come off El Camino. Uh, off the freeway, across El Camino, go into our city, they'll see. This first impression of Milbury, which is TOD Gateway on one side, and then Alexandria and. You know, our development here on the south side, and they form kind of an arch in. We've heard, I've heard a lot of citizens already complaining that. The architectural detail or gateway for this uh Milbury Avenue. It's starting to feel kind of enclosed and boxy. And so I think to improve or address. That community concern, I would like to see more of kind of transition elements that it, it does represent. Kind of a residential transition into Milbury. So instead of having just the flat glass. Face rectangular northern side to have a step back on the top floor and maybe even some. Elements like a roof or an overhang or a fascia or a trim or something that kind of transitions and softens that. Because people in the Gateway Project are gonna have to be looking out every day at a big office building. And I think that, you know, their residence is something to look at that would be softer or transitioning, not only would be. I guess uh less stressful and more psychologically pleasing for them, but also give an impression for people, like I said. Coming across this uh Milbury Avenue overpass and then kind of seeing this canyon of. Buildings that is a little bit softer and a little bit more welcoming into Milbury and gives the first impression of Milbury that you're coming into. Uh, our bedroom community, which is basically it is instead of something more. Uh, modern design and, but it's a little bit more sterile and a little bit less uh inviting. So I think that, again, as I mentioned, it seems like a very simple project. Um, but the developers obviously got the notice from the uh city staff that we are looking for this transition. And this mixed use and, and this TOD development. But I think just on the upper uh stories, I think that there's more. That should be done. Because this is basically. Uh centerpiece of uh people coming in, what people will see coming into our city.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other commissioners? Everybody, I'm looking at my screen. I'm not seeing Commissioner Del Negro. You're meeting.
I give people some space to.
Thank you.
Dominate the situation. Um. I tend to do. Um, so, you know, I appreciate the design. Um, I do think it's um. A good discussion to have between the two variants. Um. I do like Commissioner Quig and um prefer variant two and do not feel comfortable with variant one, to be honest. Um, I would have some absolute requirements. One is that it's a right hand, uh that left hand turn only onto Harriet Tubman, maybe the, uh, emergency vehicles only. I absolutely would say that's required. Uh, I think also I do appreciate the flexible in and out extra lane to deal with um. Potential backup of traffic um that could occur at the interested exit to the parking structure. I think that flexibility is a value added. And I would really want to see some type of commitment to something that, that helps not, that cement wall that I mentioned earlier. Kind of help show the case that this is, you know, not just your development, but also the entrance to biotech Milbury. Um, I'd like to see some commitment there to, you know, provide for the city some feature, enhance this district that we're creating. You know, the, the structure, yeah, I am a little concerned about the lights, the reflections on Milbury Avenue in particular. Um. I do obviously want to see some work go into some analysis of reflection of light. Um, if you go down to the new South Francisco buildings, there are some light problems off of the ad, the building is at this point. Um. Again, so just the fact that it's all glass and reflection can go many directions depending on the time of day. Yeah, I, I mean, overall, I like the building. Um, I do like the design. I like the green walls. Um, I, I do have one more question that's kind of popped up, which is the parking for bicycles. Uh, the numbers still feel a little low to me. Um, considering this is a TOD based development. Where your, people are gonna come in on bicycles. Uh, I know that we have a standard. Um, and this project, according to what I read, meets that standard, but was that standard for the far ratio of two point five? Or is that standard adjusted for the far ratio of two point nine for the number of bike spaces? The staff have maybe uh answered that question.
You just mean is the bike space adjusted for the additional um FAR?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay, well, still surprising. I think that you might want to have a little higher, considering that, you know, this is obviously going to attract a lot of. Biotech industry, a lot of bicyclists with the train and bar station. I do feel that thirty-two is probably gonna be a little inadequate in the long term. Um, I can't talk too much about, obviously, the community benefit part. Um, I'm sure you'll get a. Big interest from city council on that. Um, they probably want to push you up a little bit. Um. I won't, I won't dive in there because it's not my place.
Could, could we maybe have the applicant address in terms of the bike parking spaces? If, is there some flexibility to add more? In the future, if that's.
Absolutely, yes. We can, we can commit to increasing, increasing that now. Um, you know, we are fully supportive of this being TOD and reducing. Um, single vehicle occupancy card trips as part of the transportation to management program in general. So um, we'll take a, a further study at um that exact count and increase the, the number of short term and long term um bicycle parking.
The long term was a bike room?
Correct. Yeah, it, it locker room, so as the, those showers and lockers as well as repair stations. Um, as well as, um, you know, with the, with the increasing number of electric bikes, um, charging stations for those as well.
And that didn't come up. What about charging stations in the parking structure?
Yes, the high level of, of parking structure, EV charging stations in the parking structure.
Right, um, I've said I like the project so far. I just have some contingencies I definitely say have to be tied to it, as I mentioned.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Quig, I guess, um, I know Commissioner Quig probably, uh, maybe I'll. Uh, take a little what you're saying, that it, it's come up already with two commissioners in terms of variant one versus variant two. So I think that might be worth having just a discussion on, because I think all the commissioners, including myself, well, so far, who I've heard from. Um, not complete, not comfortable with the variant one. Is that Commissioner Quig, did you wanna?
Yeah, I, I. I was wondering if um. I remember um Mr. Monta said that at the beginning, we were going for both. And I just don't feel comfortable with both. So I, I don't know if we can add a condition that if it's not number two. That. It come back to us or something. I, I don't know what to do, but I just don't feel comfortable with number one at all. It's um, it, it, it's just not gonna work. And um, I, I liked the cafe. I was happy to see that. It would be open to the uh public or to. The employees only, however, with, you know, seven hundred and fifty-one employees, I would imagine that. Some of these um. Employees are not going to be working strictly eight to five. Uh, so I would. I wanted to make sure that uh there was places for the people that are not working eight to five. Could get something to eat uh afterwards. So those were my biggest two concerns and. Uh, the most important one is the variants.
Okay, and Commissioner Davis?
It's been explained to us a couple of times that variant two, which includes the land swap, has already been approved by BART. And we've had verbal confirmation from the FTA that it's approved and we're waiting on a letter. So it is most likely, right? Please staff help, going to be variant two. Right?
Okay, it's correct.
So it's, so it seems that that's the case and there's been that assurance. I think what the commit, what I'm hearing from the commissioners is that there's. A concern that if the event, it doesn't happen, what is, you know, would it be possible? I, I guess I'm asking this of staff. Would it be possible to just say we're going to approve variant two? And not have the variant one? I think that, that might be what's making the bulk of commissioners a little bit uncomfortable. Because it seems like we have the assurance that variance two is almost there. Um, from, from what we're hearing, but in the event that it doesn't happen, if we approve it, we don't have any recourse. So it ends up going back to variant one. I think that's what I'm hearing from. Okay, I, I'm getting at least a nod from Commissioner Quig, so, and Commissioner Del Negro as well. So is that something? The staff right now, um, recommendation is, is for approval of both possibilities, both options with the preference to variance. Two, I believe, but um can, would it be possible for us to just approve variant two? As it is, since there is that confidence. Or are we, so I'd like to hear from staff, please.
Yeah, through the chair. Hi, Darcy Smith, female director. So, so at this point, as you've heard, we're just waiting on the final approval. We're optimistic it will happen. But why we brought the two variants forward is because these are outside agencies, the city. And frankly, to some extent, the developer can't control and has, has no land use authority over. So we, I would strongly recommend that you keep two variants. Moving forward because we need that flexibility to ensure the project can move forward should an outside agency that we have no control over on land use matters. You know, interferes. That you heard from the developer that they did look at, you know, trying to move the building and it's just not possible. Though, though they own the land that we need, you know, that needs to be swapped with, with BART. BART cannot require the dedication of that land. Um, so we were, you know, working on this over a year to come up with two variants that could move forward simultaneously, and that's why we're here tonight. Um, and I think the challenge is, is if for some reason there's a outside barrier to variant two, we really have to fall back on. On variant one and would not. Be able to present much of an alternative to that. Um, so that's why staff's recommending both alternatives, move forward. I'm just in the, in the, in the fallback chance that something happens.
Understood. I think the concern is that the commissioners that I'm hearing from are um not comfortable with the variant one. So. And whether you say we're, okay, we need a fallback to make it happen, I, I mean, the recourse is figure something else out. I guess that's, I mean, I'm, I, I don't want to put words into mouths of people, but I'm just saying that seems to be what I'm hearing. And if that's not what I'm, if, if you, you know, if it's a matter of we just go with both options or nothing. Wouldn't it be better to at least have the one option? So, um.
Yeah, well, we, we presented findings in the resolution for approval to document variant one's compliance with all applicable. Standards and requirements of the city's plans and codes. Um, I think we would want to know more about what, you know, what code compliance issues exist.
I think it's the circulation that's the concern for, for everybody.
Yeah, so we have evaluated the circulation, find it, you know, doesn't present any hazards, it's. It's acceptable to the city, to our outside traffic engineer. And acceptable to other agencies that have governance over circulation, access to sites, like you heard, Central County Fire Department, Police Department. Again, it's not preferred, but we're here tonight because we can't compel an outside agency. Now to prove something like this.
That's understood, but it's, I, again, I'm, I'm kind of coming back to. If we're kind of in a position where it seems like it's a good, you know, there's a really good possibility this will happen. And I, I see Mr. Conradsen, a couple of people's raised, but just to finish my thought, if, if that's the case. It almost seems like it. It might make sense to wait or to go with what, so. Anyway, uh, just some thoughts. So let me, let, let me go ahead and have Mr. Connor and then, and then Commissioner Del Negro had some thoughts. But it's just my thoughts kind of running through based on what I'm hearing and also just my own comfort level too. That was the biggest concern for me. I, I. I like the design of the building. I, I don't have a problem with um people in TOD two looking in the gateway, looking across. Because, you know, it's across El, uh, Milbury Avenue is a very big road, so I don't have any concerns with that. And I think that it could be very, you know, it could be a great design. I'm just, I am concerned about circulation and, and it would be nice to have that. To name, to we, um, Mr. Conrad, though.
Yeah, I was just gonna offer, I actually very familiar with the FTA real estate process. Um, they're simply gonna be looking to make sure there's, but the equal value or value uh is preserved. They're really not in the. Uh, business of over overseeing whether it, you know, it's good urban design or, or not. That's not that, they just care. business of over overseeing whether it, you know, it's good urban design or not. That's not that. They just care about making sure that the funds that they gave to BART when the project, when the BART project was built are are being protected. So I would think that's pretty much a formality, especially if you've heard from from F T A staff that they view it positively. I I just want to throw in that two cents because it's just a one of those obscure areas I happen to know a lot about.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Del Negro.
Yeah, so I guess my issue variant one is it's not feasible to hammerhead at the end of the Adrian Road. We kicked this can down the corner by not requiring some other alternative in the approval of the last biotech building. There has to be a turnaround at the Adrian Road if you're going to go with variant one. It's just not, it's not a no go. There's just no way you can actually create a circulation plan with that dead end at Adrian Road. That's why I'm not comfortable variant one at all. Even if variant two got rejected, I still wouldn't approve variant one. Not without effects at the end of Adrian Road.
Commissioners, if I may offer two things, Alex, perhaps you can pull up variant one again. Because I do, I don't believe there is a dead end. I believe it still goes around the building. But yeah, just to reaffirm this, this is not our you know, we are all in on variant two. We've actually advanced construction documents for variant two for variant two to be able to submit for building permit when appropriate. The BART has approved and F T A again has given us the verbal. So you know, just to be clear, we all are, you know, variant two is the preferred, and we're proposing that. So I would, you know, Longfellow is committed to variant two. So I would I would support if you would support variant two tonight with a condition that if for some reason F T A would propose any issues, then you would come back to planning commission for working out variant one. So you I'm going to refer to city staff if that's if that's a possible seating, but that's, we would support this.
You would be open to that, having variant two, and then if there if if it doesn't come through the approval, then it would come back to planning. That's okay. Commissioner Quig. Oh, you're muted. You're muted. Yeah.
My question at this point, and I'm glad to hear from the applicant. How long would it take to hear from from the Fed federal government on this? I mean, when did it get submitted to them? And what kind of timeframe would they expect?
Yeah, so if I yeah, if if I may, chairman.
Yes.
So obviously, we're dealing with federal agency, so we have no control over their their timing. But BART staff's communication, most recent communication was last week with F T A, was they're expecting four to six weeks timeframe for us to get F T A approval. And to Mr. Conradsen's point, yes, the the like valuation is the major issue that they're looking at, and that's supported by, you know, an appraisal that was done on the the two values, the values of the two properties that are being exchanged, and they were valued equally. So like, I I think we're sitting here, you know, with a ninety nine point nine percent chance that it is going to happen. And Mr. Conradsen, correct me if I'm wrong, I think maybe the point of your item was that if variant one is approved, the likelihood of it becoming a reality is very slim. And if the applicant is willing to revisit that, if if for some reason, you know, F T A approval doesn't occur, I I think that may be the safety valve that the commission is looking for.
That's what I'm referring to. Thank you, Mr. Bur. That's exactly what I'm thinking. But, you know, rather than having, you know, we'll just go ahead and revert back to variant one as it is, being able to have a stopgap where if it doesn't, for some reason, the point one percent that it doesn't happen, that the commission can kind of see it again, or there can be some further thought into it. I think that that would make people a little more comfortable. That would make me feel comfortable. I won't speak for everybody else, but so Commissioner Wong. And if just just to bear with me, if you've done this before, if you raise your hand, your your picture moves on the screen. So and then if you put it down, it moves again. So that's why I'm I'm going to, I kind of look back and forth, but I think it was Commissioner Wong had your hand raised first. So go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, just one last push about this building design on the northern end. The design on the southern end has the rooftop garden outstanding open space. But it doesn't do anything for our city because that faces south, basically on the border of Burlingay. It doesn't provide the openness. The airiness doesn't help the residents of Millbury or T O D. And as far as residential design, when we look at housing and remodels, we make sure that windows don't line up with the neighbors so that there's privacy. And this building is five stories of all glass windows staring into a T O D residences. So in addition to reducing the light glare, as Commissioner Del Negro said, I would really urge to modify the side of the building so that there's more privacy, there's more setback, there's more openness that you can just simply move the open space and put more space on the northern end. It's a responsible thing to do for the neighbors and for this transition. And then also to improve our city rather than adding more interest, more details so that the building's not just one flat wall facing Al Camino.
You're talking about Millbury Avenue.
I know.
Do you should we? Can you bring up the the elevation for Millbury Avenue, the the rendering view from Millbury Avenue? I think that would be helpful.
Sure. Yes, just one moment.
Phil, maybe you can also speak to again the, you know, why the building is designed the way it has as far as, you know, being the gateway coming into Millbury as well as how that glass element is really a feature.
Yes. I'm muted now. Okay. This facade is I, what commissioner, we hear your concerns, but it doesn't do quite justice because there's a lot of thought that went into those details. The windows are not all straight. They're slightly angled to address to get more daylight, but also for glare control. And in terms of the rhythm, there are gaps between the glass similar to what you're seeing on the the rail truck side, where you have these vertical elements. Those are also recessed. So it's not a a flat glass as you are interpreting. It's really about a design feature that highlights this area, but yet respects what's going on on the 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 face facing Millbury Avenue. They articulated the brow to have that break at the top, so it's not continuing this repetition onto this side. And it's really about breaking up the scale and showing the activity, but yet being respectful from the outside.
Right. So again, sorry, misspoke, talking about the Al Camino side. I meant the Millbury Avenue side here with all glass on the northern end. It stares right into the T O D housing.
Yeah, so that it, the most most life science buildings, even though it has glass, it's not clear glass. So you do see the banding. That's what we call shadow box. And it visually looks like it's the same material, but it's not something you can start. It's not like a headlight that you see through the glass of the building. So there are some mitigating measures that are done on the facade. So it's not large head glass box that you see at the end.
So the open space on the southern end, outstanding green belts, openness, airiness. Is there, can we have any of that on the northern end transitions?
I think we were the the outdoor terraces. We we can extend that level of landscaping to protect or shield or enhance experience from the neighbor's view.
You're referring to this, the one that's kind of level with Millbury Avenue on this.
That's correct. Yes. Yeah.
Does that help, Commissioner Wong?
That would definitely help soften a little bit if there was a planting plan. Again, the upper, I didn't see any planting plan for the open space on the upper floor. So if there's more planting plan to soften this northern end, that would help.
Commissioner Del Negro. I'm sorry. I think Commissioner Quig, you had your hand raised earlier? No.
Yes, I I did. But now I kind of forgot what I was saying.
Okay.
I had something in my brain. And you know what? I lost it. I'm so sorry.
We can come back.
It's getting late.
Yep, it's not one of our later times, but yeah.
Happy to hear the the applicant that they would be agreeable that if for some reason to was not approved by the feds, that they would be willing to come back. So that made me extremely happy.
Okay, thank you.
And I I think the building is lovely. I just to reassure, I I think it's, I I the fact that it's not totally square. And I like the third floor. And as far as the reflection, you know, Millbury Avenue is pretty wide. And it's not going to affect that. If it would affect, it's not that many units up at the top. Actually, I think it might even be higher. So I I just wanted to express that it was a lovely building. I'm very excited about it. My only concern was the circulation. So thank you to the applicant for that. Okay, hopefully, we can get this resolved quickly.
Thank you, Commissioner Del Negro.
I just have one question for Commissioner Wong's point about the building on that side. You know, the top floor, I wish the rendering was still up. Isn't actually occupied floor. It is just glass up top. I mean, is there anything that can be done color wise to soften maybe the upper floor glass?
Could we maybe bring that back up?
So that will be spandrel glass, it'll be glass material, but it will not be transparent. And so, yes, we can address that with, as you can see, it's already shown as a almost a bluish grayish. So that that will be broken up in that we done through choosing the color and the the frit of the glass and the spandrel.
But I see obviously the between floors is also the same color. I'm just kind of curious, maybe something else up top color wise could help soften it as a suggestion.
Yes, and like you said, there's you can do color as well as like grit on the glass to give it some texture as well. So there's quite a few things we can look at there.
I like the building myself. I just think of to Commissioner Wong's points that, you know, something that could be done to soften the the upper corner. I mean, do we have further discussion or looking for a motion at this point?
Both. We can, if if there's more discussion to be had, or we can just get, if we can get a motion, we can still do discussion after that as well. So I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, but I don't like to give you a chance to talk.
The building is beautiful as is. I don't think it needs any further work. This project is going to bring what we want in the station area. This is what we've asked for. It's going to bring a lot of jobs, a lot of people coming to Millbury. They're going to use the transit center to get to work and go to work. Hopefully, maybe some of them will even live across the street at the gateway. I'm I am fine with the resolution as it's written. Variant one, what I can't figure out is the applicants have already gone through all possible iterations of how they could do it without the land swap. And if the land swap wasn't even an option, and we were presented with just one project, which would be the equivalent of variant one, would we really turn this project down? I don't, I'm not, I know I wouldn't, but I I think they've done all the work they possibly can. They can't shift the building. If somebody else owned that that land and it wasn't a land swap, wasn't an option, I don't know. Variant one has been approved by all safety concerns and all other possibilities. So I'm given that it's only got apparently a very slim chance of even being an option. I'm not sure why we're so worried about it in that it is an acceptable option. I just want to remind everybody, this isn't a mixed use project. This is an office commercial project. It's not mixed use. It doesn't have to have more retail in it. It's got a cafe. Yeah. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Del Negro. You're muted.
I was going to make a motion. I just wanted to. So, you know, I guess I would make the motion that we approve the variant two plan to move forward. With, obviously, I did like the flexible in and out third lane to the garage. And that there would be a requirement that's left hand turn only for emergency vehicles coming out of the BART station onto Harriet Tubman. And with some level of commitment to some signage as an introduction to the biotech Millbury Center on that that north facing wall.
So of a question of staff. So I think what we would need is to motion on there are very a few different things here in terms of the site development plan, the design review permit. Do you need that?
Slide. Can we queue up the?
Okay, that would be helpful.
Help you read it off? Yeah. And we can certainly incorporate all of the items requested by Commissioner Del Negro.
Give me one second to pull that up. I do also want.
Oh, sorry. Correction. I should, we should confirm that the applicant is willing to agree to the terms of that motion. But I heard Mr. Fritz say earlier, he was amenable to moving forward variant two only. So let's just confirm the other items, although some of them are within the city's jurisdiction. So I can speak on behalf of the city that those terms would be amenable to us.
Those terms meaning the left turn only on Harriet Tubman way. And then the signage program is that, I mean, that's going to happen, but I guess Commissioner Del Negro wants that to be part of, like, as a requirement of this application.
Like a commitment to something that's going to introduce the Millbury Biotech.
Because there will be a signage program that has to come back to us. So
Yeah, I'm hearing maybe some different signage that could be in the city's right of way, or, for example, on the corner of Millbury Avenue and Rollins Road, where another city monument sign was recently removed, but we've been working with Alexandria Real Estate to work on that replacement signage. And correction on the left turn. I'm not sure we can explicitly prohibit it, but we we can do traffic control signage. We can get enforcement out there. That often goes a long way to dress poor behavior. But we will certainly look into all any and all options within the right of way.
We can't require that emergency vehicles have the only left hand turn allowed?
Well, I wish we had that power. But I think in practice, you know, you put
On both sides of the building if you don't.
We could look at it. I mean, there are places like Stanford University, for example, that will put bollards in the street, and then those can only be controlled by emergency services. The feedback we typically get is that will slow them down, and that's not desirable. But we can certainly have conversations with the emergency response providers to understand what if any modifications would be amenable to them. And and keep in mind, there's an evolution of this, right? So like, maybe one day those those vehicles have embedded sensors that open up bollards or gates automatically. In twenty twenty two, we'll design it for what we think can accommodate, but it's an evolution as emergency response vehicles.
The structural interference in the road flow. I'm just asking for signs that says left hand turn only for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, we can definitely do that, whether those drivers will pay attention to it and
That's fine. I mean, to me, it's illegal. It's a different thing, but
Okay.
So can we, Commissioner Del Negro, can you go ahead and clarify your motion? And I think we need you to read this.
Make a motion.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Mata.
Just one moment. Sorry to interrupt. I do want to point out and direct the commission's attention to the conditional approval, specifically number two. The general requirements on the first page of exhibit A of attachment one. This condition refers to design variant number one.
Which condition?
Number two.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so the this condition refers to approval of design variant number one. And it also speaks to the fact that the applicant is required to obtain necessary permits for the land swap related documentation with BART regarding variant number two, and then goes on to say that only upon full execution of the land swap documents approval, variant two will come into effect. So if there's any motion tonight, that that does not include variant number one, that
So, um, if there's any motion tonight, um, that, that, uh, does not include variant number one, that, um, uh, that this might need to be amended.
Updated, right. Okay.
I believe we're asking for that updated amendment according to our discussion.
Well, so you can go ahead and make your motion, Commissioner Del Negro, and ask for an amendment if that's what you suggest.
Okay, so, um, I'm making a motion to adopt a resolution approving a site development plan, design review permit, with minor adjustment to the MSASP development standard for building height, exception to the MSASP maximum street wall height limit, and a conditional use permit, making findings, approving a sequel analysis, and adopting an MMRP and a statement of overriding considerations to allow a life sciences building with an integrated parking structure on a two-point-oh-seven acre site located at Two-Ten Adrian Road, based on the findings for approval in the resolution, and subject to the conditions of approval in exhibit A, with the amendment that the variant two is acceptable, and that the app will come back if variant two is not, uh, uh, signed off by the FDA.
Does that, is that okay for staff in terms of the structure of that?
Yep, uh, through, I would recommend we just leave the conditions as are, because through the motion, you're stating that any, the project, if it had to rely on variant one, would return to you for further examination. And so it's, it's a little bit tricky to dissect the conditions at this stage. Um, but we would obviously not move forward with that and return to you be, before those conditions were utilized. I'm not sure if Mr. Conner has any comments, but I think we, the, that part of the motion that requires the project to return to commission stands.
I'm not, Mr. Connor, not quite clear.
Nor am I. Um, I, I mean, it seems you could simply approve the project with the condition that it, uh, comply with variant two. Uh, and if variant two becomes, uh, you know, uh, impossible, then they, you know, they could come back and get a modified approval. I, I don't, maybe staff is suggesting you simply stand on the language in condition number two. Uh, and that would basically approve variant one, but if variant two, you know, is feasible, then, then, uh, that would become, uh, uh, operative. I, I.
The motion is.
And, and the, and the commission, right, I think the motion right now is to, uh, change that to say we'll only approve variant two.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, Mr. Conner is saying that if this doesn't go through, then there is that option of coming back to planning commission with a revised plan.
You'd need to revise the approval.
Okay, if Commissioner Del Negro, do you want to keep it as it is, your motion?
What I just said qualifies for that requirement.
Okay, um, do we have a second from that?
Good, oh, good. Are you voting on individual features of the motion?
I don't think so. Do you want us to separate?
Clarification on the left-hand turn only. I just want to make sure we're, this is the roadway coming out of the BART, coming under Millbury Avenue, and then turning left?
You may not turn left except for emergency vehicles.
Coming under, would you come under Millbury Avenue, you hit, you, you would normally go left.
Everybody makes a right except for emergency vehicles can go left.
I'm sorry, that didn't make sense. Um, a right would go into the tracks. So you're coming up Adrian?
Right, go straight.
Be straight, yes.
Go straight, okay, yeah, right. So that, that is within the control of the developer, and, and I think we could mandate that. I was a little concerned about telling Bart what they could do with the roadway that they own. But they do not own the portion behind, so, okay, that's fine.
Okay, and, and did we hear from the developer that that was okay, that left-turn lane? I think that was okay.
Yes.
Turn, no left turn.
And I'm, I'm not going to add the contingency about any signage for the biotech center. I think that'll come out in the, in the.
In the signage program.
I think you guys see the value obviously of it as well.
Okay, so do we have a second on, I think we're all clear on the motion right now. So do we have a second on that? Uh, Commissioner Quig, I think, okay, is a second. And can we, do we have any other discussion on this? Anybody have any other that you want to add before we go to the vote? Uh, Commissioner Wong.
Yes, I think again, it's very close, but, uh, when we do these small tweaks, there's some details missing. And we would really like to see signage and some of the other improvements we see.
Signage will be coming back in a program, so that has to come back. So it's not, it's not a negotiable, that, that they will have to bring it back as a signage program, so.
That's good then.
Yep, mhm, and, and then something else?
Um, yeah, some of the details like the landscape on the, on the upper floors and the wayfaring and lighting and security and, uh, some of the other architectural elements, I think it's very close, but, uh, would like to see it, uh, slightly modified, I think.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, can we go ahead and call for the vote?
Commissioner Wong?
Oh, oh.
Oh, sorry.
I thought you were calling Commissioner Wong. I don't know why, sorry.
Commissioner Wong?
Nay.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Quig?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes four to one with, uh, Commissioner Wong voting against.
Thank you. And, um, so just to make sure this is going to, there is a ten-day right of appeal to, um, go to the city council. And then on top of that, there is the committee that fits to be worked out as well. That's part of the condition. So, um, so there is that, that is going forward. Um, having said that, I think it's, I do like the building and the design, and I don't think it's a big block. So I, I'm really, uh, excited about seeing further development in that area and, you know, being able to see our city grow. So, uh, with that, uh, congratulations, we're hoping for the FDA to do their, their job so that if we're at the ninety-nine point nine percent, we don't have to worry about it coming back. And I think, uh, just, uh, thank you to the applicant for, uh, accommodating, you know, the concerns of the commissioners. We just want to make sure that we do have a, a good project that doesn't come up for city. So, uh, so with that said, congratulations, hope, hope it all goes forward. I know there are a bunch of moving pieces to, to still work out, but I think, uh, once we have it all set, I think it'll be, it'll look really nice. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for your support and your great feedback. Um, we're very excited to bring this project to fruition in City Millbury. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, let's go on to, uh, item number five, there is no new business. Item number six has staff updates, please.
Uh, yes, I do have a couple of updates for you this evening. Uh, the first is, uh, regarding the Millbury Rec Center. So the grand opening for that is June eleventh. Um, the celebration will take place on Saturday, uh, ten-thirty AM. And, uh, that's going to be ribbon cutting ceremony, and then after that, the celebration, um, would, would continue until two. And that includes live band, demo classes, and a lot more. So, um, there'll be barbecue, popsicles, and some giveaways, so this is a very exciting time, so. Tell your friends and family, and, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll see you there. Uh, the other announcement is that, um, the annual recruitment to fill upcoming vacancies and city commissions and committees is now open through June two. Um, so to apply, you can visit the city website, and we're currently accepting applications for, um, community enhancement advisory committee, culture arts advisory committee, economic vitality advisory committee, planning commission, senior advisory committee, and sister cities commission. So anybody who is listening, uh, to this, uh, group, looking for enthusiastic volunteers to serve on our commi- commissions and committees, so please, um, please, uh, feel free to sign up at the city's website. That's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have any commissioner announcements? Oh, do we have a meeting next, on, uh, our next meeting is first, first Monday of June? Do we have anything planned for that?
Yes, we will, uh, more than likely be having a meeting June sixth.
Okay, and any commissioner announcements? No, or comment? Uh, Commissioner Del Negro? Oh, okay, you needed. Um, one thing, just as a comment, would be nice to have at some point, because we have a lot of stuff building, is, uh, just for me, um, if maybe at some point there could be a rendering of all the stuff that's going on and what our city will look like for the projects that are already going through, I think that would be really nice to have. So, just wanted to put that out there, but, uh, because I was trying to envision this project with Adrian, with Gateway, and I think, you know, even for future projects, it would be just nice to see how everything kind of fits together. I think that would be, that would be really nice to be able to get a good picture, because otherwise it looks like there's this building, there's that building, it might be a lot. So I, I just, that's a comment that I wanted to put out there. Um, and, and again, thank you to staff, because you're doing always so much work on all of these projects, so many different projects, and, um, huge ones, and thank you for all the work that was into it, I think, I think it's always important to bring that up. Um, so anything else, any other comments?
I was, I'll point out that, um, Alexandria has leveled almost all of the facilities that they needed to for their rebuilding. I'm rather impressed on how fast they did that.
That's really fast.
I hope our projects all move that fast.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be interesting. I mean, it's, it's a change, it's a time of change, but I think it'll be really exciting, and it would be nice to see that whole space really activated, which more than it is, so. Um, I don't want to go into comments too much, but I just, I, I just envisioning all that's going on, I think it's really exciting time. Um, for Millbury, and hopefully, you know, we'll look at all the circulation and all of that, we'll, we'll, it'll be a good time. Um, okay, so not, we're not seeing any other comments, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and for those who's listening in, and, uh, we wish you all a great rest of the week.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, thank you.
Good night.